Okay.
Tell me what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Is it on? Oh, thank you.
There's this on hand. I don't see your little. It is? You can. It's so soft.
Hello? Hello? Test?
Crazy.
Got a green light.
As long as you get a green light.
Alright. I'll just project.
Alright, we'll call the meeting order. Do a roll call. Anybody here for public forum? Seeing none? Consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Suppose we can comment on the tele commuter forward city and the EDA portion. I'm gonna make sure we get that in the newspaper.
It's a positive thing.
Alright, hearing no discussion, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We'll jump right into the street project rep.
So tonight I'm here to ask for approval of my specifications authorization to go over bid for the 2024 street utility improvements project. I have a copy of the plan set right here. We have a couple of weeks of work to get on it, but it's ninety-nine percent taken care of. And we'll have specifications taken care of at the end of the week as well. I did get a chance yesterday, I realized you guys haven't taken a look at it yet. It fits exactly with our feasibility report. I did get a chance to go over it with both Kyle and Jesse and Brian Michael yesterday morning. We went through the whole plan set. And took a look at the utilities, took a look at the alleyways, took a look at what we're doing with everything within the plan. So if the council would, we're requesting approval of plans and specifications and advertise for bid. Now we need to advertise for twenty-one days. The deadline is noon on Tuesday to publish on the following Monday. So we will get the advertisement in prior to noon next Tuesday. We'll turn in this week.
Turn in this week.
It will publish the following Monday, then we have twenty-one days and we'll set a bid date. I think the bid date will be looking sometime between Tuesday, March nineteenth and Thursday, March twenty-first. And then that would follow right back into the next. If the council approves us to go over plans here for a bid, that would follow back into the discussion of special meeting. And I would like to do that is have a special meeting the following week, the week of the twenty-fifth. It could be a morning meeting, it could be evening meeting, it could be whatever, as long as the bids come in right around where we expect them to be. It should be a ten-minute meeting, but I would like to get that bid approved so you can get word out to the contractors so they can get materials and all their stuff going for construction. I have a feeling it's gonna be early spring, at least I hope it's gonna be early spring. We want them to be able to go as soon as they can.
Is that, that's the meeting where we actually open them or they're opened ahead of that?
Nope, they'll be opened ahead of that. You can give a summary of all the bids prepared to our engineer's estimate and recommendation for awards.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the plan specifications and advertise for bids.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the proposal for the project. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
So like I said, we would be looking at a bid date around sometime between March nineteenth and March twenty-first. What I didn't recommend, I'd ask is that the council consider setting a special meeting sometime the twenty-fifth, probably the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, which would be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
What about, you said, anywhere in the week of the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, I mean, the whole point is to get it done prior to the meeting on the second Tuesday of April. So the sooner the better. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday would be preferable, but whatever works, I guess. And I guess that it, I don't know. The council's schedule, but it's a special meeting, it could be a morning meeting, it could be an evening meeting, it could be a Tuesday, a Monday, a Wednesday, Thursday, whatever.
How do people feel about like seven-thirty in the morning? Should be a pretty quick meeting, right?
Anytime working.
Okay, let's say Monday morning. The twenty-fifth.
Seven-thirty AM?
Yep. Yeah, make a motion to set that. I'll make that a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to schedule a special meeting for the twenty-fifth at seven-thirty AM to order approval bids. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Like I said, the bid will be the middle of the week prior, and you guys will have a letter of the bid declaration that has all the information for all the bids, and we'll have a letter of specifications to add to that agreement.
Very good.
Okay.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, utility rates. Everybody saw those? Minor changes?
Yep, most of them are based on the so the sewer rate was adjusted in anticipation of the project the fund loss from that project or any well, because our fund is negative and to get it back to a positive. Still water was increased to for help off the set, the cost of a lead back if we choose to go down that road. And the water rate, base rate was increased due to the new meters that are coming in. Better be installed better. They'll have a dollar charged to us for remote.
And how many un-metered waters and sewer do we have? Do we know?
I was just giving meter declarations today, so we have electric un-metered is mainly our street lights that we have a formulation that we estimate those.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering about the water and sewer. Water and sewer, we have that un-metered and we didn't increase them, and I'm wondering how many there are. I've heard there's not very many.
It's rare. If we have any un-metered, actually, we don't have any un-metered because even if we have a request for bulk water, we put a meter on it to calculate how much water they're using in bulk rate for billing, so.
How many households do we have that receive monthly billings? So not necessarily households, but businesses, all things included.
I can tell you that we have six hundred and seventy-four electric meters. I believe after the report that I just ran, it's been pretty heavy into the electric meters lately with the new metering program going on on board in life. Just off the top of my head, that's what I remember, so. You figure every, oh, six hundred and seventy. Some they have two meters, you know, just based on their demand or.
Alright.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-four, national.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Think everybody probably read about the driveways. Sounds like the owner's gonna handle that, but we're gonna set it up for her.
Yeah, I was hoping that all made sense. They just reached out to the city to help facilitate the drainage. Just like approval to go ahead with that so that we can, I can work with the utility committee, work with Brian, ask Brett for guidance if we need to. But I did speak to the family, they will, you know, obviously will solicit the, you know, solicit the bids and they'll approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve that request.
Most likely.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Personnel committee? You wanna take that one, Domingo?
Yes, we met. Samantha, who helps us join, very happy, pleased with helping you go in busy. He did a job adjusting into everything we're into. With the recommendation of grade ten, step three.
Where is it from?
Ten-one.
Ten-one, so we added a step or moved her up a step because of her, I don't know, just really good performance and taking on a lot and.
Domingo, you said what? You said to where?
Ten-three.
Ten-three.
Ten-three is where she's.
Ten-one to ten.
Yep.
Where would we be if they were hiring a city administrator?
It would depend, it would depend, I think it would depend on the qualifications, obviously, so and the, and the qualifications, including education degrees held, that kind of thing. I know when we were looking at administrators, we had two of them had master's degrees, one had a business admin degree. Couple of them had experience. Devin had EDA experience, but not city administrator experience. Yeah.
Saying college qualifications, but what about proving to do the job? What's that worth? I mean, if she can prove she does the, proving she can do the job of a city administrator, I mean.
When we had discussed, we thought, I guess, yeah, when we had talked about it, that's year eleven, that's kind of where we thought, is where we were gonna put like someone that had all the.
Like if someone, if we wanted someone with an advanced degree, we would need to pay a higher wage. You may not think that that holds any value, but in the, when you're competing against others, it does, so.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I would argue that all day long with
Yeah, right.
what you've done in getting a college education and the form of on-job training, or on-job experience and proving yourself on the job, so.
Yep.
I guess what I was just kind of looking more at the eleven-one than than the ten-three, because that'd be like the more administrator entry role, I guess. And you're asking her to get two jobs. Yeah, that's true. You have two very defined salary jobs.
Didn't we at some point have two separate wages or two separate positions?
We did. And so this while the wages aren't separate and that came into our calculations with staying at grade ten also, and that's because we decided to rate this at eighty percent or seventy-five percent. Did we put seventy-five percent?
Eighty, twenty.
Eighty, so eighty.
Twenty percent comes from the ambulance.
Yeah, so it'd be like thirty, thirty-two hours administrator and eight hours ambulance director. At some point, if we have to split that an ambulance director wouldn't start, where would we have ambulance director? Six or five? I can't remember anymore, but it's somewhere in there. Five or, five or, five or six for the ambulance director. So I think when you, when you consider that and the fact that we also moved added, moved her up a step for kind of the experience and taking on and grasping and and fulfilling the job.
So this proposal is to give one hundred percent pay for both these roles at step ten?
Grade ten, step three.
Grade ten, step three, yes.
And what's the annual figure for that?
Seventy?
It'd be twenty, two thousand eighty. Two thousand eighty.
Yes.
And the.
Is that the seventy-seven thousand?
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four. Seventy-four. And Devin was at sixty-five.
Two weeks, two, well, just a couple, two years ago, yeah, so.
He would have had steps and colas and. He'd.
Three to eleven, probably.
Four, four, five. Four, five.
Four, yeah, probably four, not five, yeah. Yep.
And you were, not too long before those last significant raise, you were at how much annual or what grade step?
I don't remember because I had so much.
You mean when she had a different job?
I had, I had a very different job. I had a very, very different job. Yeah, so last year, when council appointed me in January, we were still looking for a part-time administrator or a part-time contract expert. So I took on that role with a slight wage increase. Then with the, with the stipulation of depending on how council wanted to move forward, I would have a six-month probationary review like any other, every other employee does with then my wage set at that point. Which that happened, that happened in July, since then now this is my one-year review, so it's and it's in a, and it's an exemption for overtime position as well, so there's.
Previous, previously, her ambulance section was if she worked extra hours, she would clock overtime. This is just one pay grade and, and it's.
So with the eighty-twenty, would you say that you work eight hours a week for the ambulance or more? And is that less than thirty-two hours administrative then?
It just, it really, well, no, it depends.
It depends.
It depends, depends on my call-off, so an average call can take you three hours. I can get back to that call, I can be on for six hours, but then I still come in and I still work and get daily things done. So I will put in a ten or twelve-hour day. So, I mean, I'm still with no overtime. I try to flex those hours.
And her goal is to get enough daytime ambulance staff so she doesn't have to leave during the business hours to, to take an ambulance call, but.
Just a little bit more than that this time. It just, we have not been in a position to do that. Which.
But we've got a number of new EMTs on.
We're getting to that point where I think we're gonna be setting ourselves up pretty good for a little bit of assistance during the day, so I don't, I don't have to be pulled in some direction. But I will say that the EMSRB does recommend a full-time director at over, any ambulance works over two hundred calls a year. And we're at two forty-three inclining as of last year. That's the most that we've ever had. It was over the prior two, three years, we only had hundred and sixty, a hundred and eighty calls a year, and now we're at almost a two fifty mark. And that's been two years real consistent. You know, plus with the regulatory changes and things like that, the time to keep up on that, I do a lot of that in my off time, to make sure everything is up to date and I'm staying up to date as a train.
So it seems like both admin and ambulance are short of hours.
Well, we're getting there. I mean, it's been, we've hired Karen, so she's gonna take a lot of load off. And like I said, if we can get you on a few less daytime ambulance calls, that's a lot of time.
I don't doubt you're working more than forty hours and, and working well. But given the significant increase previously and the split between eighty-twenty for the ambulance as well, I would be in favor of keeping you at grade ten, step one, and I guess I'll make that a motion.
Step one.
One or?
Recommendations are three.
The recommendation is a three.
Right.
So Michael made a motion to have you at step or grade ten, step one. Is there a second to that motion? Skin, hearing, I know a second, the motion would die. From the, from the committee, our, I'll say, I would motion that we do the grade ten, step three as the personal committee recommends. Is there a second to that? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Is this, is she reviewing in in six months for this, or I mean, is this a yearly thing?
Annually. Is annual, is the goal in the past that's never been done, but Sam's been doing good at evaluating staff and and so far, our personal committee's been pretty good at doing that also, so that's the goal, is annual reviews, yep.
It's hard limited, of course, you could do it more often if you wanted.
Yep. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed or abstaining.
Opposed?
Aye.
And abstaining? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, Sam.
This next one is the liquor license renewal for trip. I'm supposed to have something in your packet for today. And it can, it can be all over till March, it's not due till the end of March. I was expecting my legal department to get me something, but at least hopefully, because hopefully, we'll do it yesterday, but it just hasn't come in. It's just their standard three-two liquor license renewal with a hundred dollars fee. No. Correct, and it sounds like they have all the paperwork just ready, it's just that we haven't received it yet. I didn't know if they wanted to do a conditional, you know.
Yeah, I'd make that a motion to.
And the review of all their documentation.
We'll approve it on condition that all the documents come in as expected.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All in favor of conditionally approving the quick trip liquor renewal, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I think it's the last state. Used to be three-two was less expensive than other beer, but now it's more because they can't sell it anywhere. Alright. Any building and maintenance report? Everything must be fine there, okay?
The community building, we have these really nice mini splits here. Something we're noticing in my office and in Karen's office is these units, whatever you wanna call them, the
Detacs?
Are starting to fail in the main office. So Terry was going to look into mini splits. He's, he's kind of taking parts from other ones that don't, that we aren't using or that have parts available to get off of them to kind of try and rebuild them as they, as they break down, but but I know that he was gonna look at maybe getting a mini split for the main office for, I think he can do a mini split with the three different rooms in three different zones. Or doing a fourth stair and doing turns on top on the old, on the old roof. And doing a fourth stair and actually getting Chris Houston's office with some heat versus doesn't mind being at eighty because he doesn't have any, he doesn't have any big.
Well, the mini splits move error, right?
Yeah, but he doesn't have, there's nothing in his office for heat right now.
In which office? Oh, okay.
So we just, we just turned my office up pretty warm and it turns up and, yeah, but, so yeah, a little bit of things are starting to fail on the door, so. Remember how many years they are? Fifteen?
So these two have like one compressor outside for him, and then he's thinking you could put three in there and one?
He's gonna get some folks and see what their options are and things like that, but just wanna make you aware that these are starting to fail. We have multiple rooms with them in there, so.
Everything fails eventually.
Right, they're, they're graduating by the end, but. I mean, it was a fifteen year. Twenty, something like that, yeah, it was twenty, yeah. Just something to think about, just maybe this wise.
Mm-hmm. All right. Uh, EDA. Working on the trail and we want to mention the, uh, telecommuter, we're gonna make a motion for that, aren't we? Or that was in the, that was in the consent agenda. Where's that? Who came from the phone office? Yeah. Yes, so now we'll be a telecommuter-forward community with our resolution we approved. The trail's getting handled. Hopefully, everybody agrees. Park board.
We met, um, talked about splash pad, splash pad hours policy related to, policy related to drought conditions and use, um, and then we would ask to advertise for, or have the council approve to advertise for one summer help.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve one summer help for the, okay.
That was Michael and Kyle, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on that? Home in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Is that it?
The other thing we discussed at park board last night was also bringing back the tree program for a second year.
Hmm.
Um, with, you know, the street project going on, um, there's quite a few other trees that had to come out last year because of the disease and being able to offer that back again, so, um.
You have about the number that we did?
I knew you were gonna ask that. No, I don't. Um, that's quite a few though. I'll say it was, I'll say we had probably close to fifty.
I talked to several people about mine and they acted like they didn't know anything about it, and it's like, well, it was advertised, so.
Yeah, we pushed it pretty, we pushed it pretty hard, but, um, do it again this year.
Okay.
What we would like to do, I don't remember if we had a motion, if we needed a motion to adopt that or not.
We should have a motion for that. Set. Okay. Have a motion in a second to continue the tree program again this year. Any further discussion? Home in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Has the park board talked about like a camera or two at the splash pad end or? Wonder if the city should just talk about them in general? Yeah.
I have an idea, have a poll for that, um, Brandon, I did work on that last year.
Okay.
Other things came up and just nothing ever happened with it. We will also have to put a snow fence around the splash pad for the winter. Um, we did have a snowmobile drive over it this winter.
Hmm.
So to protect that, um, we will have to put up a snow fence next year.
Then they can drive over the snow fence and the splash pad.
Hopefully not.
For this year, because we've seen a quarter of all the features.
Or all.
Majority of the features are taken down, now we'll have all the features to stick in, so hopefully that will help deter it.
Oh, hell.
With the snow fence.
All right. Library board.
Uh, library board, you have the twenty twenty-three annual circulation in front of you. There's copies up there if you want to look into, um, that explains what resources went out to everybody. And there's a average value for what those resources cost if you were to personally buy them, um, to help show the value of what this public library offers to the, the community as a whole every year, which is significantly less than what we provide to the library annually, so. So certainly a positive outlook on, on, uh, having a public space, space like that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's nice to see. Arts board.
Arts board met last week. Uh, Eva Hemingway, one of our student reps, gave a positive review from the Fillmore Central Choir that went up to Timberwolves game recently and singing the National Anthem. They had a great time doing it, the arts board had, uh, sponsored that along with the fire departments of Preston and Harmony, um, the bank in Preston, Harmony Telephone Company, a few other businesses contributed and, um, they had a great time, so. It was a nice review.
Yeah, that's good. Anything going on with the fire department? Nope. And everybody see the sheriff's report? Anybody have anything else for our meeting? Yes, Erica. Yeah. Oh, yeah, I skipped it completely.
It's a holding spot usually, that's what he's like, anything from the chamber, oh, it's a holding spot. So there with the July twenty is every meeting that's this year, the last Wednesday of every month, starting this Friday at Harmony Spirits at six thirty. So anybody who's got anything you're doing fourth of July, if you want to contribute or help with that, help me do it.
When's it start?
This, um, so the last Wednesday of January.
If they're worried.
Okay. Six thirty, Harmony Spirits.
Twenty-eight.
Did you fill up the visitor book? Is that advertising, is that all done yet or not?
And so advertising, everything's all in and the guidebook is being assembled and, um, I guess Michael knows more about it.
Yeah, yep, we've got a meeting in early March to go over everything. We've got, uh, a significant amount of ads and we've edited all the content and that'll come out, um, on time this year, so it's great.
Good. All right, thank you. Anything else? Should we introduce Karen to the whole council?
Yeah. I told her to sit behind me. No, Karen even first was, um, first, this is gonna be her first full week, which has kind of been about a year, a month. Karen and I have, uh, we've been working hard on the audit the last month and a half, two months. Um, and, uh, yeah, good to have her here. It's exciting, she's taken a lot of time with it already, she's going to go fast, so she's been a great asset for our team so far.
Welcome aboard, glad to have you. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.